We all sat here, Cam? Looks like staff's all... No, we have no end to tonight. Alright, good evening, everybody. I am Mayor Mark Lehman, and I'd like to welcome everyone, both in the audience as well as online, as we call to order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 9th. I am joined on the dais by Vice Mayor John Deloso, Councilmember Susan Harvey, and Councilmember John Moore. And as well, we have our city staff led by our city manager Damian O'Bid, our community development director Vicki Parker, our city engineer director of Public Works Craig Scott, and our city attorney Robin Donia with us tonight. And as well, we have our deputy city clerk Lauren Burgess here, and I will ask her to lead us in a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Mayor Lehman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Deloso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Thank you. And I'll ask everybody now to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this brings us to item number four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. Uh, let's see. Do we have any changes to the minutes? Any additions, corrections? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Right, before we vote, just checking, anybody want to speak on this since it is an action item? Mr. Berich? No? Very good. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. And that carries, thank you very much. Which brings us to announcements. And I'll begin with our meeting orientation for new attendees and new viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, the city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall, and this is part of our Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. Next, the Ronert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, please call the library at (584) 9121, or visit them online at www.sonomalibrary.org. Next, the Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, like right now, as a matter of fact, they're open. And also Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and of course, by appointment. For more information, you can call them as well at (707) 794-0305. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. And next, the city does offer a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and we have lots of details for you on the web at kattatcity.org. And lastly, it would be remiss if I didn't mention that Saturday, October 13th, is Oktoberfest in the park downtown from 12:00 to 6:00 PM, so don't miss the Wiener Dog Races, they're always the hit of every single year. And this brings us to agenda item number six, which is approval of the final agenda. Do we have any changes, Mr. O'Bid?
No changes, Mayor.
Seeing none? Okay. And this brings us to item number seven, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And I have no cards, so I'm going to open public comments, see if any wishes to speak. Mr. Berich? Good evening.
Good evening, council. It's former councilman George Berich, for the record here. I've been coming to these meetings long before many of the staff were here, before many of the council members knew how to find City Hall, except for Mr. Deloso, and so forth. And I'm really surprised that you, that the mayor introduced city staff tonight, but always fails to introduce me as an honorable guest and former city councilman in good standing in the city, who always participates and offers constructive criticism and common sense solutions to simple problems. As you can see tonight, we have a pathetic turnout here tonight. We have one gentleman in the back of the room. This is an ongoing problem for public participation in body politic, and your failure to encourage good citizens to come forward and be an active, and be active participants in this process. I want to welcome the public who are watching this at home tonight. I was instrumental in bringing these cameras to the City Hall after years of advocating that this should be done. At the last city council meeting, I want the council to remember, at the adjournment of the meeting, Councilmember John Deloso came up to me on the side of the room and asked to have a word with me in private outside. I refused. I don't understand why the council members do not want to call citizens up and put their questions and their concerns and their conversations with the public on the record, in full transparency. Why council members may choose or wish to take citizens outside into the dark, like the mafioso, and have private conversations out of sight of public view is not only an act of cowardice, but shameful. This is, this has been an ongoing issue between Mr. Deloso and I, and I've asked for him to please contact me by email, or speak to me in public on the record, but he still can't get it, or he doesn't want to get it. I think the rest of the council gets it, and maybe you should comment on this tonight. What's wrong with bringing citizens forward when you have something you want to say? That last meeting was less than 90 minutes. Less than 90 minutes. So it wasn't that we were tired, we were out of time, it was just another attempt to do some kind of backroom deal, or backroom criticism, or backroom conversation out of sight. And you'd think you would have learned a lesson from Chief Parish, who tried to do that with me, and he was able to keep his job after a federal judge scolded him and the city for such tactics. So I'd like to see you go forward, yes, sir.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up right now.
I'd like the city to go forward in transparency and stop these strong-arm mafioso tactics.
Did you wish to speak on consent tonight, Mr. Berich? No? Thank you very much. I'm going to look and see if anybody else wants to speak on public comment or consent. Seeing none, I'm bringing it back and closing that. Alright, we have two items in consent, A and B. Does any council member wish to pull either of these items? If not, I'm open to a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. That carries four with one absent. And this brings us to direction on future agenda items, and I'm going to ask if I have any direction on future agenda items tonight from any of the council members? No. Not tonight? Very good. Thank you, council. And this brings us to item 10, which is a public hearing. This is continuing a public hearing to annex certain property to Community Facilities District Number 2017-01. And I believe, Mr. Scott, you're going to be introducing this for us.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. On September 12th, 2017, the city council adopted a resolution establishing a Community Facilities District and designating the remaining property within the corporate boundary of the city of Kattati as future annexation area, of which the city council intended to later authorize annexation of specific portions of the annexation area as development occurs. So that, that action set the Centerra Way Development Project as the first boundary of the CFD, and let the whole city be the annexed area. On September, we have an entitled project known, referred to here as Kessing Ranch, and with the entitlement, it came with the conditions of approval. They're working through those conditions of approval to ultimately construct the project. One of the conditions of approval was to annex into the CFD. And so on, September 11th, the city adopted a resolution declaring its intention to approve that annexation, and then schedule a date for the public hearing. Now, that public date was set for October 9th today. However, notice that was published as per the requirements mistakenly put the public hearing date as October 23rd. So tonight, we are merely going to hold the public hearing for the purpose of continuing it to the 23rd.
Very good. Any questions for staff from council? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing, see if anybody wishes to speak. Then I'm going to bring it back to the council, so when looking for, basically have a clerical error in published notice, so what we're looking for is a motion to continue to October 23rd. That's the requested action, if somebody is willing to do that.
Move to continue this item till October 23rd?
Alright, we have a motion. And I have a second. All in favor? Again, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And that carries four with one absence. Alright, so we will see this back on October 23rd. Thank you, Mr. Scott. And this brings us next to our regular agenda, and we have a resolution approving the 2018 City of Kattati Holiday Tree Lighting Event. And I believe this is, it says Ashley Wilson, but I'm guessing she's not going to be presenting that. Mr. O'Bid?
I'll be Ashley tonight. So, thank you, mayor and members of the council. So, as you know, we have the annual tree lighting event in La Plaza Park, and this year is a continuation of that ongoing event. We also are going to be continuing to incorporate crafts and other goods that vendors can sell throughout the evening, as well as food vendor and truck options. And the event itself is proposed for Friday, December 7th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and it's in La Plaza Park, of course. And this will be right around the same time. There's also the shop and stroll event, which is proposed, which will be coming to council, I believe, it's probably going to be next meeting to discuss. And then also, Breakfast with Santa is right around this event. So it's a sort of a trio of things going on, two of which are city events, and the other one's run by the same organization that runs the farmer's market, the downtown shop and stroll. So there will be a street closure of La Plaza, and one of the lanes on Old Redwood Highway to allow the horsestroll and carriage to safely circle the bandstand portion of the park. And also, there's going to be a train that will run on La Plaza Street, so although, for those reasons, it's obviously safer to have La Plaza closed than allow vehicle traffic through there. We also have amplified live entertainment. I think the butter dishes will be back, because we've had them for several years, is one of Vicki's finds. And, not to out-Vicki on that, but they've been, they've been great. And also, we have, The Grinch will be there for the kids, storytelling, of course, Santa will be there, like every year, and then the lighting of the tree. So, anyway, it's, it's been a really great event, and this is just continuing to build on that same event from the prior years. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Well, perfect. Let's see if we have any questions from the council. Councilmember Harvey?
Um, when we, are we going to put a timeline schedule out for this event when we advertise? You planning on doing that?
We usually put together timelines for the event itself, but you're, you're saying, is it like actually posted publicly somewhere?
Well, the reason that I say that is there was a little bit of confusion last year on the timing for the tree lighting. One said a something said one time, and one said another time, and I just thought that it would be beneficial to have one advertisement with a time so that people can plan, plan their evening around that, because it gets kind of hard to deal with children in the evening hours.
Understood, yeah. There, there was a schedule, as I recall, last year, there was a schedule that was provided at the event itself, but not in advance of the event?
Right, and I think-
With detailed events through the night?
There was something that got published somewhere that gave a different time than the schedule that was at the park. So, any advertisement we do, I think we should be specific about kind of what's going on when-
Okay.
-so that people can plan. That's all.
Very good. Anybody else? Do you have some more?
Mr. O'Bid, did we change the order of the events on these? Didn't we used to have the tree lighting first, and then the holiday cheer, and then the shop and stroll?
So the holiday cheer is a chamber event, and I don't know, I think it kind of depended on when, these are typically Friday nights, so it kind of depended on where it-
So the last couple of years, they were Fridays?
Vicki might have some more information on that.
I think that the chamber events that led up to the holiday tree lighting, the holiday cheer was on Thursday, and I think the Kattati Oaks Concert was the Wednesday before, so they were all prior. I think you're remembering that correctly. And then, when the, when, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the folks that do the farmer's market, but when they decided to do shop and stroll, they thought Saturday was a better day for it. So, different events, but the, but the, that week of events has changed in order, you're right.
So the last couple of tree lightings were on Fridays?
Well, the tree lighting was always on Friday, as far as I remember, anyway, because holiday cheer was always on Thursday. At least in my recent memory, anyway.
Thank you.
Clearly, we've all had enough holiday cheer, because nobody can remember when we did it. Alright. I guess we're doing it right. I have one quick question for you, Mr. O'Bid. I know we just started our lighting project throughout town, and part of that is the downtown. Refresh my memory, will that be completed at that time? Will we be able to use this new lighting for this event?
Correct, yeah. This will-
I don't want to jinx you by saying that, I'm seeing Mr. Scott go, hm.
The, the lights in La Plaza Park are scheduled to be done by early November.
That'll be great. I think that'll be really helpful. Very good. Well, I'm going to open this to public and see if we have any questions, comments. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. So unless we have any more comments, the action is for someone to move a resolution approving this.
Moved to adopt resolution, approving the 2018 City of Kattati Holiday Tree Lighting Event.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a first and a second. All in favor? Again, signify by saying aye. Aye. And that carries four, one. Four with one absence. And this brings us back to the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. O'Bid.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. So, since we're just starting talking about the lighting project, work is underway on that project at McGinnis and Marsh, the pathways there that connect through, on the McGinnis side to the Lincoln Avenue, Lugano Pathway, and then on the Marsh Street side, between Marsh and McGinnis, as you know. And then also, the East School Street Tunnel. And so far, actually, just today, they poured the foundations for the light poles along both of those pathways. And they also have installed the new lights in the, in the tunnel, so they're moving along quickly. They still need to do, after the foundations are cured, then they still have to finish the lights on the bridge itself, and then move into La Plaza Park, and of course, set the lights on the light, the light poles on the foundations. So, like I said earlier, that should all be done by early, maybe mid-November at the latest. And then, other construction updates, L section is substantially complete, and this is, if you go out there today, La Salle, Lakewood, Larch, and a portion of Lincoln, looks like a brand-new street. It is a brand-new street at this point. Yeah. So it looks very nice. And then, the Lugano Bypass Sewer, this is the lovingly known as Project P1, that is underway. If you happen to be out on Redwood Drive today, or yesterday, they're, they're installing the trench dewatering system right now, and we're expecting them to start installing the actual sewer main as soon as tomorrow. So, they're going to work up Redwood Drive, and then in November, they're, they should turn the corner and start work on Highway 116, and that'll be all-night work on Highway 116. So, if everything goes as planned, weather permitting, work would be completed in February of 2019. And remember that the, just a reminder that businesses remain open throughout the project, and for your safety and the safety of the people working out there, always obey the traffic construction signage. And then, some police news, our corporal, Corporal Gaio recently received an AA degree in criminal justice and is transferred to SSU for BA in criminal justice. And, yeah, so she, through the, through SSU, she can receive credit for an internship that she has to do as part of her BA program in criminal justice, and it requires, the internship requires 180 hours of service time, and because she's already employed in the criminal justice field as a police officer, as a corporal, SSU is allowing her to do a Kattati Police project in lieu of an internship somewhere else. So, her project is to be a school resource officer assigned to Thomas Page Academy, and the assignment will run until the end of the spring 2019 semester. So, some of the plans for that assignment are working with the principal on safety evacuation drills, teach faculty and staff the latest trends in active shooter response, sort of the run-hide-fight, you know, response for active shooters. And on Friday, she will spend her time during lunch hours with the students, and then also help recruit parents for our parent project that we do here on-site at City Hall. And she's also working on other ideas, such as collaborating with our, one of our dispatchers, Rebecca Lucas and Ashley from Recreation, to host sort of a Coffee with a Cop, but for kids. And I think that the tentative name of it is Coco with a Cop, because you want to caffeinate those kids, they don't need any more energy than they already have, so. So anyway, that's just some, some good news that's happening in the police department right now. And then on the rec area, and the, and some of our rec programs, on October 31st, children and families are invited to stop by City Hall for City Halloween, again, from 1:30 to 5:30 PM, to kick off trick-or-treating, visit with staff, and show off their costumes before their evening Halloween celebrations. So, that was a, was a great event last year, and so just continue it, it's a great way to interact with people. And then during the week of Thanksgiving that children have off from school, the city's offering a three-day camp from Monday to Wednesday for parents who need or want care for their children if they don't have the time off before Thanksgiving. And during that week, campers will make crafts, play games, and have fun in a, in a safe environment, free of tryptophan, I hope, but they'll get plenty of that on Thursday. And then, Breakfast with Santa that we mentioned earlier is now open, and space is filling up fast. They're, they have 20, or they have about, they have about 20 registrants already for both time slots, and they can accommodate about 80, so sign up quick, otherwise you could find yourself with no space. And this will be in the Kattati Room on December 15th, and there's a pancake breakfast and holiday craft-making, as well as visiting with Santa again if you missed him at the holiday tree lighting. And you can register for this on the website or over the phone. And then finally, we're also taking vendor applications for annual holiday tree lighting on Friday, December 7th. And for any of this stuff, or for more information, for more information on any of this stuff, or to volunteer or be a vendor for an event, you can contact Ashley at (665) 4222, or A. Wilson at kattatisity.org. You also can visit our website, kattatisity.org, or the city's Facebook page for some of the latest news and information.
Very good. See if we have any questions for the city manager from the council? I have not so much a question, but a quick comment. I wanted to thank you, and I wanted to thank the Public Works staff. I received a constituent request from one of our businesses along 116. When the work began, they were concerned that it was confusing to people driving the area, that it might suggest that the businesses were hard to reach, that there was construction during the day, and you guys managed to get that turned around very quickly. There's a lot of clarity in the signs, and it's very clear there's night work. We have a very happy constituent, so thank you for getting on that, so very promptly. Well done. Alright, and that brings us to yet more reports this time from the council members. Would you like to start us tonight, Mr. Moore?
Oh, sure. I went to Remith last week up in Yokaya. It was the last meeting for a long time, board member Cloverdale, councilmember Joe Paula, and so there was a little ceremony for him. And I did not consolidate the numbers yet, but the initial transition into the new workers' comp program is very promising, and they've already closed quite a few claims, so that's encouraging. So hopefully, that trend will keep up, and then I'll submit those numbers next meeting.
Excellent. Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Deloso?
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of items. So, two days after our last council meeting, we did have our Ag and Open Space Meeting, and that's, the big part of that meeting was the Matching Grants Program. So, at our level, so the Subcommittee was actually a Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee and the Fiscal Oversight Committee, so we had members from both, and we did go ahead and rate, rank, and forward, I don't want to say approve, but forward our list, which then was going to the Fiscal Oversight Committee this week for their meeting and approval, and then eventually to the Board of Supervisors. So, we approved, I want to say it was somewhere around $2.5 million in projects, and it's great because it's a mix of projects. There's some open space acquisition projects, and there's also projects that are improvements to urban corridors, which I think is important. I think, you know, there's so many voters in the urban corridors as opposed to the outlined county properties, and they're the ones who end up having to vote and, you know, pay this parcel tax that we all pay into, but it seems to, you know, overwhelmingly get supported several times that it's come up for, for a vote. So anyway, we're moving those projects forward, and I believe it goes to the Board of Supervisors in some mid-November date and meeting. And I did just get a request, as it turns out, last night from the California Homakers Association, so I'm going to sit with the city manager and see if we can work out a schedule where we could do another food drive like we've done for five or so years now here in Kattati, and hopefully, we can see if we can move that forward and match that request. And something, I don't have, I don't want to put a lot of detail into it, but, you know, received a kind of a disturbing email from a citizen in Kattati about neighborhood issues in this particular neighborhood, and how this person's child has been, I mean, bullied is kind of an understatement, and the bullying has gone on from not just kids in the neighborhood, which we know how that can play itself out, but even from the adults. And the child does have some learning disabilities, so I found that really disturbing and really frustrating, because, you know, what can you really do? You can't go say, hey, you need to move out of this city because, you know, you're rude. It's, it's just so much more above that, but I just wanted to bring that up because I think it's something that we can look at at some future meeting, possibly, and-
You might well see proclamations about that, and attention deficit disorder at your very next meeting, actually.
Because you're a good mayor, and you're on top of this, that's why.
Thank you for the confidence.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring, I just wanted to bring that up as an item, and that's it for me.
Councilmember Harvey?
I have no meetings in the last two weeks. I will have one this week, but got an email today about some awards that nation, national awards, easy for me to say. me to say, um, that the Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership won. There were twenty-one awards that were given, and, um, the Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership received two awards. Um, they were for its training program by upgrading its curriculum and training materials, um, and the partnership also received a two thousand and eighteen Excellence Award for its outreach efforts. That include promoting the use of water-saving showerheads, faucets, and aerators for both, uh, commercial and residential. So I think that's pretty cool, that, um, there being twenty-one awards, and we got two of them, so.
Very nice.
Yeah.
All right, let's see, I just have one thing to report, and this is from our Sonoma Clean Power Meeting back on the fourth, and, uh, one of the new programs we're looking into is putting Level Three chargers. These are the so-called Fast Chargers that can give you a significant battery charge in forty-five minutes roughly, forty-five minutes to an hour, so very quickly. And they'll probably, the goal right now to start is one on each member locality, so each jurisdiction will have one. Uh, I imagine as they go further, obviously, larger communities should have more and probably will have, but, uh, so they're working with our staff and trying to pick good locations. This will be an interesting thing, because the concept with these is, this is kind of a draw for people doing businesses, uh, whether they're eating, shopping, or something, because it's kind of a draw. If you're driving an EV, and you need to charge it, and you recognize that, hence, there's an area that offers both goods and services you might need, as well as the chance to get your car topped off quickly. It's not like losing a parking place, you're actually becoming a draw to new customers, so we're kind of excited to see how that works, and we'll see what staff comes back with as suggestions, but I can think of several good ones in town, so I'm sure it'll work very well for us. So that's all I had for tonight. Uh, so with that, that concludes city council member reports, and this brings us to item fourteen, public comment on non-action agenda items. Mr. Berich, did you want to comment?
Thank you, mayor. It was about a year ago tonight, Sonoma County and Napa County were suffering through one of the worst fires, uh, in our, in our lifetime. Thousands of people became homeless, thousands of homes and businesses were destroyed, and, uh, what was Kattati doing? Nothing. Our police department was fair enough and nice enough to send three dispatchers up to the county to help. I understand they got paid, but our city was ready, I believe, for an emergency had come to Kattati. But the fact is, our city council did nothing about the raging disaster that was going on, while other cities were inviting fire victims and homeless into their towns and so forth. Kattati did nothing. We did not open up one or two of our community rooms, we did not open up the Veterans Hall, we did not call for an emergency council meeting to see what we could do to reach out to the public, to our fellow men and women and children in the county, to lend a helping hand. You sat on your rear ends, you sat on your hands, you did nothing. Ms. Lori Alderman and myself came forward, tried to give you some ideas to do something, and you rolled your eyes. We are now in October, two thousand and eighteen, and Mr. Deloso, two years ago, asked the council nicely if you would be so kind as to maybe consider putting on a future agenda item, as an item, the homeless problem in Kattati, and maybe what we could do about it. And that was nicely said, nicely put, two years ago! And now you've come up with another idea tonight that we're gonna put on a future agenda. Let's try to do this in our lifetime, please. We're approaching winter, it's gonna be raining, very cold out, and we have a few dozen, couple dozen homeless in this town that we know of that are walking the streets at night, and bedding down in the bushes and in the creeks and under the freeway overpasses, and wherever they can find any peace and quiet. When is this city council gonna put this on the future agenda, on what you're gonna do about the homeless crisis? Before somebody dies, and you have this on your hands and on your conscience? As a Red Cross Disaster Relief Volunteer, I was on call to be deployed last year, I was not deployed, so I came here to City Hall to be part of your team in reaching out to our fellow man, and you guys did nothing. It was, this is a horrible reminder of your failure, and your failure of leadership.
Well, thank you, Mr. Berich. All right, does anybody else have any comment they'd like to make? Seeing none, that closes item fourteen, and this brings us to item fifteen, information received after the agenda was posted. Do we have any new information? Very good, seeing none. This brings us to item sixteen, adjournment, and we are adjourned at seven-thirty-six. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you next time.